Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to thank the Ball Forge Borough officials, the mayor, and council for giving us this opportunity, particularly Marilyn Barletti for providing us with this beautiful space. This is quite a renovation you've done here. It turned out really, really nice. It was a little cramped before. It certainly isn't any longer, and you've done a great job, and thank you very much. Entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting?
Motion.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board, agenda items only. Okay, no one? Thank you. Proclamation, 220242.
Well, I have a proclamation here proclaiming, declaring the month of September 2022 to be Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. Whereas suicide is the leading cause of death in the United States in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. One person dies by suicide every four hours, making it the second-leading cause of death for ages 15 to 34, and the fourth-leading cause of death for ages 35 to 54. Whereas nearly 5 million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide, and each member of our community is valued, each one of our, each member of our community is valued and irreplaceable. In talking openly about stress and psychological health builds trust, reduces barriers to care, and enables early intervention. And local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to maximize, to the maximum extent possible. Whereas the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program works with community stakeholders to assure that each citizen has access to mental health services and mental health crisis intervention to spread the message that help and resources, help and resources are available. Whereas local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Now, therefore, we, Jerry Notary, Annie, Debbie Dominic, and myself, Chris Schirmer, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim September 22, 2022 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. I think we have someone here, correct?
I'm here. Thank you so much. I'll come up.
Come up to the, Rick, you want to do a picture?
Yeah.
Want to do it out front or?
Yeah, why don't we do it out front?
Can you not?
Yes.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Resolution 220240. Approving-
Approving the county's current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved of the following payables: Lackawanna County's General Fund, numbers 346522-346721, inclusive totaling $1,595,082.44. Lackawanna County's electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $3,408,654.88. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
I'm sure everyone had an opportunity to review the per tables. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220223.
Authorizing the filing of local share account grant applications. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County is submitting grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of various agencies detailed. Number one, the 20th Ward Social Club, $62,842 for roof repairs and replacement. Number two, the Conal Park Little League, $17,850 for refrigeration and infield groomer. Number three, the Indra Loco Animal Sanctuary, $300,000 for the pavilion and septic system and installation. Number four, Jefferson Township's Little League, $74,774 for field improvements. Number five, the Justice Volunteer Fire Company, $151,200 for building renovations. Number six, the North Pocono Dandelion Little League, $133,517 for field lighting. Number seven, Old Forge Fire Company, $121,543 for building renovations and equipment. Number eight, Telespan Senior Services, $150,000 for building renovations. Number nine, the Tripp Park Missy League Field, $110,000 for lighting and field renovations. And number 10, the VFW Post 4712 Walter Posaga Post in Simpson, $150,000 for building renovations. Whereas Lackawanna County authorizes, the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Share Accounts Grants, and now therefore be it resolved, the 7th day of September 2022, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized the submission of these applications to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the above named entities and their respective projects, adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, here to speak upon that is the Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution is authorizing the submission of the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development on behalf of 10 agencies totaling over $1.3 million. The LSA Grant Program continues to provide support and enhance community and economic well-being for communities' important projects across Lackawanna County. Does anyone have any questions?
On the question? Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220224.
Authorizing CDBG modifications for the Lackawanna County Broadband and Public Housing Program. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, of the County of Lackawanna, is hereby authorized to submit modifications of the following Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Lackawanna County, on behalf of the following entitlement municipalities, Archibald Blakely, Dixon City, Dunmore, Jessup, Old Forge, Elephant, Taylor, and Trupe, and the following non-entitlement municipalities, Music, Simpson, and German, for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Programs. Federal fiscal year 2020, the modification will delete the Public Service Line Item, Mortgage, Rent, and Utilities from the Mortgage Utility Assistance Program for the following municipalities: Archibald Burrow, $64,587; Blakely Burrow, $47,340.12; Dixon City Burrow, $52,175.13; Dunmore Burrow, $38,054.17; Jessup Burrow, $58,775; Old Forge Burrow, $48,169.35; Elephant Burrow, $44,199.51; Taylor Burrow, $56,692.77; Trupe Burrow, $57,294; and non-entitlements are $10666.81. The funds will be transferred to create the Public Service County Broadband Line Item for the Lackawanna County Broadband and Hence Enhancement for Public Housing Program. Be it further resolved, the county has complied with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned modifications. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Sacco.
This modification will allow for a new project to be created to provide or increase broadband across for low and moderate-income residents of public housing operated by the Housing Authority of Lackawanna County. The proposed housing locations are a mixture of family and senior dwelling units, nine entitlement municipalities, and three non-entitlement communities. Funding for this project is through the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program. Any questions?
No questions for Ms. Sacco?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolution 220225.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Blakely, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into cooperation agreement with the Borough of Blakely for the Blakely-Burrow Mott Haven Plot Street Improvements Project. Be it further resolved, with the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Contract for the Borough of Blakely for the Blakely-Burrow Mott Haven Plot Street Improvements Project II. General Construction, Stafursky Paving Company, 3 Export Lane, Archibald, Pennsylvania, the lowest, most responsible and qualified bidder, for $57,583.50. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Director.
Yes. These are standard required agreements for the CDBG program. This resolution states that the county is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Blakely and a contractor agreement with Stafursky Paving Company, who was the lowest, most responsible bidder for the Blakely-Burrow Mott Haven Plot Street Improvement Project in the amount of $57,583.50. Anyone have any questions?
Where's the street? Mott Street?
It's in Blakely Borough.
Right.
It's the Mott Haven. I believe it's off of Main Street, a little bit past the Borough Building. I'm not 100% sure, but-
Has nothing to do with the Main Street then?
No. No, no. These are owned by Blakely Borough, these streets.
The Main Street issue is still an issue.
Correct.
And it's a, really, at this point, it's a PennDOT issue, not a Lackawanna County issue, even though it is a road that we're responsible for.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 220226.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Archibald. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Archibald for the Archibald Borough Hill and Rock Street Stormwater Improvement Project Phase 1. Furthermore, Archibald Borough has agreed to commit American Rescue Plan funding to finance approximately $128,553.39 in part construction costs for the project beyond the CDBG funding. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Contract for the Borough of Archibald, for the Borough, Archibald Borough Hill and Rock Street Stormwater Improvement Project Phase 1. Two, Constructional, Construction, General Construction, Stafursky Paving, 3 Export Lane, Archibald, PA, the lowest, most responsible and qualified bidder for $422,673.13. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Again, these are standard required agreements for the CDBG program. This resolution states that the county is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Archibald and a contractor agreement with Stafursky Paving Company, who was the lowest, most responsible bidder for the Archibald Borough Hill and Rock Street Stormwater Improvement Project Phase 1 in the amount of $422,673.13. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for, a second?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 220227.
Ratifying a RACP grant application for the Blakely Health Center Project. Whereas the Blakely Health Center Project entails construction of the Blakely Health Center on a property purchased by the Blakely Ridge LLC on Business Route 6, Blakely, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project, and Lackawanna County desires to obtain the funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved, that the, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $3 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program for the grant for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is ratifying the filing of a redevelopment assistance capital program gap, gap, grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Blakely Health Center Project. It's in the amount of $3 million, and it's for construction and related costs of the Blakely Health Center on Business Route 6. And we apply on behalf of this entity. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220228.
Ratifying a RACP grant application for the Valley View Business Park Lot #24 Project. Whereas, the Valley View Business Park #24 Project entails site preparation and infrastructure on the property at Valley View Business Park Lot 24, Jessup Borough, PA. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project, and Lackawanna County desires to obtain the funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $3 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Sacco.
This is also ratifying the filing of Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant Application with the Commonwealth. This time, it's on behalf of Valley View Business Park for Slipgoe in the amount of $3 million. Questions?
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 220229.
Ratifying a RACP grant application for Scranton-Jefferson 321 LLC. Whereas, 333, the 333 Jefferson Project entails construction, infrastructure, and other related costs to construct and develop a six-story mixed-use facility at 333 Jefferson Avenue of Scranton, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, Scranton-Jefferson 321 LLC has proposed that the county assist Scranton-Jefferson 321 LLC in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and the county desires to assist Scranton-Jefferson 321 LLC in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chairperson of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to file and accept an application in the amount of $4 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of Scranton-Jefferson 321 LLC for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Yes. This is another application, this time on behalf of the 333 Jefferson Project in the amount of $4 million. Again, it's a RACP filing to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolution 220230.
Ratifying a RACP application for the Waverly Community House. Whereas the Waverly Community House Incorporated Project entails replacement of the HVAC system in the property at 1115 North Abington Road, Waverly, Pennsylvania, 18471. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project, and Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the, from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $3,500,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Redevelopment Assistance Grant Capital Program Grant for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Again, this is another RACP application filing to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, this time on behalf of the Waverly Community House. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Sacco? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220231.
Ratifying a RACP application for the Valley View Business Park Lot #36. Whereas, the Valley View Business Park #36 Project entails site preparation, infrastructure on the property at Valley View Business Park Lot #36, Archibald Borough, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project, and Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners, plus you, to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $3 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Another RACP application to the Commonwealth, and again, on behalf of Slipgoe for improvements to the Valley View Business Park. Questions?
Anything? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220232.
Ratifying a RACP application for the Dunmore Distillery Project. Whereas the Dunmore Distillery Project entails building and implementing, implementing a distillery on the property of 1325 East Drinker Street, Dunmore, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project, and Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $1,500,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Yes, another application, RACP, to the Commonwealth, this time on behalf of the Dunmore Distillery Project.
Can I just ask, do you know what the Dunmore Distillery Project is specifically?
We have some more information within the application that I can get for you, that kind of details. But this is actually where they apply, and then if they are approved, they move forward with additional information as to the construction project.
But like, I guess, what, the perp, is this a dumb question?
No.
It's a for-profit. It's for-profit. So it's a company that is opening a distillery in Dunmore. So it's, we can do on behalf of profit or nonprofit organizations, this is a for-profit.
So it's a distill, like a distillery for alcohol? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure I understand. My hometown.
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions for Ms. Sacco? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220233.
Ratifying a RACP application for the McDade Park Water Recreation Complex Project. Whereas McDade Park, the McDade Park Water Recreation Complex Project entails demolition, renovations, new construction, and implementation of a water recreation complex on property at McDade Park, Bald Mountain Road, Scranton, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment Assistance Program Funds as a source to finance the project, and Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $1,750,000 to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Ms. Sacco.
Yes. This is actually on behalf of Lackawanna County for our McDade Park Water Recreation Complex, which includes our pool and our splash, and also demolition of our buildings for use of the bathrooms.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco?
This is for the splash pad?
It's for the whole, the whole complex.
Splash pad renovation of the bathrooms. For the pool and everything.
And the filtration room.
Assuming that everything goes according to plan, which I'm probably jinxing it by even saying that, what is our, our potential date for completion?
If all goes according to plan and COVID doesn't get away, we are hoping for 2023.
Next summer?
Correct.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear, because that's a good project.
Yes, it is.
Anyone have any other questions for Ms. Sacco? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Resolution 220234.
Ratifying a RACP application for Montage Mountain Resorts. Whereas, Montage Mountain Resorts LP Project entails the construction, infrastructure, and other related costs to construct and develop a 9,750-square-foot conference, conference center and 150-room independently branded hotel at Montage Mountain in Scranton, Pennsylvania. And whereas, the County of Lackawanna is eligible, is an eligible applicant for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds as a source to finance the project. And whereas, the Montage Mountain Resorts LP has proposed that the county assist Montage Mountain Resorts LP in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and the county desires to assist Montage Mountain Resorts LP in obtaining funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the funding. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Funds, and now therefore be it resolved, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to file and to accept an application in the amount of $2 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant on behalf of Montage Mountain Resorts LP for the project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 7, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Another RACP application to the Commonwealth, this time on behalf of Montage, Montage Mountain Resorts for their conference center and hotel on Montage Mountain.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Ms. Sacco.
Yes.
You've been very busy.
Yes. Yes, actually, the, the RACP, we, almost $27 million. I'm sorry.
It seems like it's a lot of similar things, but it's not. There's a lot of work that has to go into it to get to this point.
Correct.
And you do a great job, and thank you. Resolution 220235.
Ratifying a RACP application for the Pavilion at the Montage Mountain Revitalization Project. Whereas, the Pavilion at Montage Mountain Revitalization, Revitalization Project entails property, improvements, and development at the Pavilion at Montage Mountain, Scranton, Pennsylvania. And whereas, the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the Redevelopment redevelopment assistance capital program funds for a source, as a source to finance the project, and Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these redevelopment assistance capital program funds, and now therefore be it resolved, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of five million dollars to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September seventh, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Again, this is on behalf of Lackawanna County, and it's for improvements at the Pavilion at Montage.
That will be a great project. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
A question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution two two zero, two three six.
Accepting an interest arbitration award, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept and ratify the interest arbitration award between the county of Lackawanna and Lackawanna County Adult and Juvenile Probation and Domestic Relations Section Employees Association with a term to commence retroactively to January first, 2022, and expire January thirty first, 2025, adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September seventh, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Joanne Decker.
Good morning. This is an interest arbitration award that is approving the collective bargaining bargaining agreement for the adult and juvenile probation officers and domestic relations officers.
Anyone have any questions? From Ms. Decker? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution two two zero, two three seven.
Awarding arts and cultural mini grants, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the following arts and cultural mini grants in the amount of five hundred dollars each to the following community organizations, the Archbold Borough, Harvest Festival, the German Borough Community Concert in the Park, the Mayfield Borough Community Concert, adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September seventh, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Cultural.
Good morning. These are our, oh, sorry, these are our mini grants we offer all year to support our municipalities around the county, so as you could hear, they're for community concerts, festivals, so these three are applied, and other municipalities can apply, they're on a rolling basis, so.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. McWiggin? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution two two zero, two three eight.
Approving an amendment to a tax increment financing plan, whereas the Tax Increment Financing Act, PL four sixty five, July nineteen ninety, as amended, grants powers to industrial and commercial development authorities and redevelopment authorities to address conditions of light and inadequate planning and development of urban communities, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County approved Resolution fifteen dash zero one three three on June seventeenth, twenty seventeen, amending and approving the tax incremental plan for a tax increment district known as the Oak Street Tax Increment District herein referred to as the project. A copy of such resolution is attached here too, and whereas pursuant to fifty three PS section sixty nine thirty five A seven, the governing body of a municipality that levies property taxes within the boundaries of a proposed tax increment district is required by ordinance or resolution to either agree to participate or opt not to participate in whole or in part in the tax increment district, and whereas the Borough of Taylor and the Riverside School District agreed to participate in the tax increment district, and whereas the pandemic slowed the project, as did lack, as did lack of product and supplies to the point that only fifty percent of the project was completed as of August twenty twenty one, and whereas the Borough and the district have each agreed to amend their motion or resolution participating in the plan to, by extending the completion date to an count for the unexpected delay pursuant to Resolution ten, twenty twenty two, duly adopted by the Borough on June eighth, twenty twenty two, and the district pursuant to motion fifty two on twenty twenty two duly adopted June fourteenth, twenty twenty two, and each government body have provided copies of such resolution and motion to the county. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, as follows, section one, resolution fifteen dash zero one three three, is amended as follows, section A, subsection A, the initial twelve year period of participation is delineated in resolution fifteen dash zero one three three of June seventeenth, twenty seventeen, is extended for an additional five years to provide additional time for the project to be completed and that the TIF bond be, to be satisfied. Subsection B, beginning July first, twenty twenty two, Lackawanna County agrees to continue participation in the project and allocate ninety percent of the county's share of the tax incremental increment as defined in the TIF Act and Cooperation Agreement to the Redevelopment Authority of the county of Lackawanna for the project. Subsection C, beginning January first, twenty thirty, Lackawanna County agrees to continued participation in the project and allocate fifty percent of the county's share of the tax increment as defined in the TIF Act and in Cooperation Agreement to the Redevelopment Authority of the county of Lackawanna for the project. Section two, the proper officers of Lackawanna, of Lackawanna County are authorized on behalf of the county to take such actions and to execute and deliver such documents as they may be necessary or appropriate for the implementation of the Oak Street Tax Increment District consistent with this resolution. Section three, except as modified by this resolution, all provisions of resolution fifteen dash zero one three three and any amendments to that resolution shall remain in fact, in effect. Section four, this resolution shall become effective and be in full force and effect beginning on the date hereof. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September seventh, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon and answer any questions is our Assistant Solicitor, Mr. Donald Frederickson.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Taylor Taylor, the Oak Street, if we call it, is a project that is tailored to remediate the blighted Moffle Coal Company land. It was approved in two thousand seventeen, and it was originally a three-phase project. They've completed phase one and phase two, with senior housing basically what they're constructing, however, because of COVID and supply chain issues, they've been delayed. They requested an additional five years for the funding part of it to pay it back. Riverside, Taylor Borough, and redevelopment authority have all signed up, so we're the last to the body.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
A question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution two two zero, two three nine.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging Amendments, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Amendments for fiscal year twenty through twenty three with CHC Compassion In-Home Personal Care, Metz Culinary Management Skills in Scranton, United Neighborhood Centers, and Celebration Villas, adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September seventh, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak about that is our Deputy Administrator for the Area Agency on Aging, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Good morning. These are all rate changes and/or name changes to existing contracts in areas of home care, meals, COVID relief, health and wellness, and emergency shelter.
Anyone have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
A question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution two two zero, two four one.
Approving Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements for fiscal year twenty two through twenty three with the following, Center for Health and Human Services Research in Action, Absolute Genomics, Wellness Coaches, the Wright Center, Penn State Info Matrix, IJINS Institute Creative and Performing Arts Academy of NEPA, NEIU, South, I'm sorry, Scranton Cultural Center, Scranton Fringe, and the United Neighborhood Centers, adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on September seventh, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Human Services, Mr. William Browning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Center for Health and Human Research in Action is the government affiliated by OLC three that helps us coordinate both grants and research, which leads us to the three vendors, Absolute Genomics, Wellness Coach, and Wright Center. They are coordinating a research project to provide assessment, health assessment to homeless with affiliation with children, youth. If this is successful, then we'll move on to aging, et cetera. We're doing this to try to stop homeless from using emergency rooms, et cetera, as primary points of healthcare and to relieve the burden there. We, Penn State is with the Prosper Program, which has been active in the schools, and that's just a reauthorization of that, it's been active for well over ten years. Info Matrix is our case management service. IJIS Institute helps us in coordination with the Center for Health and Human Research. They have us obtain grants. We've had millions of dollars of grants because of them. And then the, the next items are all parts of our Arts Engage Program, which has been active since two thousand eight, which allows children to partake in art programs to develop pro-social skills.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Browning? Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
It's nice to see you all again. My name is Holly Van Wert, I am the lead organizer of NEPA Stands Up and the petitioner of the ballot initiative to limit solitary confinement in the Lackawanna County prison. I am here today as a follow-up to the August thirty first Board of Elections meeting, where our petition to limit solitary confinement was rejected. During that meeting, the solicitor stated that we did not provide an argument against why the petition should not be rejected. I am here to rectify that today. I am addressing you today because we are running out of time. The general election is less than two months away, and our incarcerated neighbors are continuing to endure inhumane treatment every day. We understand that ballots may already be ready to go to print and set out to eager voters. I have written a letter that I would like to submit today, and I would like to read that in part now. During the August thirty first meeting, you made it clear that all procedural requirements to have this amendment placed on the ballot were met, yet still you voted to disenfranchise the voters of Lackawanna County and take away their lawful right to vote on this measure. After further consultation with our team and legal representation, we do not believe that the Lackawanna County Board of Elections has the power to decide if a ballot initiative with the requisite signatories is legal. We believe that the county board of elections has operated outside of the powers granted by the PA State Elections Code, which specifies that the board's review is quote unquote "as to the number and qualifications of the signers." Nowhere in the Elections Code does it authorize the county board of elections to decide the legality of any ballot initiative. That power lies with the courts. In fact, the PA State Supreme Court held in Schroyer v. Thomas that the duties of the county board of elections are purely ministerial, they are prescribed by the Pennsylvania Election Code, they are given no discretion. The Elections Code seems exceedingly clear about the function of the board of elections and confirms that it misconstrued its role in the referendum process at the August thirty first meeting. We are asking the board of elections made up of you fine folks to reverse its decision and approve our referendum to limit the use of solitary confinement in the Lackawanna County prison for the November ballot. By giving you this opportunity with the new information provided, we believe that we will save Lackawanna County taxpayers the burden of defending a legal argument that we know historically has not held up in court. We are asking you to please approve our lawful petition and place limiting the use of solitary confinement in Lackawanna County on the ballot this November. Thank you, and I have that letter here.
Commissioners, other business, Mr. Schirmack.
Again, thank you, Old Forge Borough, for hosting us here today in their, in their newly renovated building, it looks great. We just had the LaFesta, which was a huge success. Monday was a little iffy, but I know, I know I sold a lot more porkita sandwiches than I thought I would, but it was a busy, busy weekend, great turnout. The Fellates is this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday here in Old Forge, so I encourage everybody to come on out and entertain their taste buds here in Old Forge. I know it's always a great event, and people work hard at these events, it's a lot of work. And most importantly, it is Suicide Prevention Month, and with our Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Alliance, we have a very dedicated group, we have almost a hundred and fifty Marion Colbert kind of leads that initiative. We have help with, from NAMI and from Northeast Suicide Prevention Initiative, we have folks from different police departments, state police, Scranton Counseling's involved, so it's a very good, good program that we do. We meet almost every other month, so, you know, it's, it's a good initiative, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say on the, on the issue of suicide, there were at least, I think my one niece possibly two, who went to school with kids who subsequently had committed suicide, and when speaking with them after the suicides had taken place, there were a lot of warnings that were given to their friends, the person who committed the suicide's friends, and kids just don't know how to deal with it. I think that, you know, kids don't know if they're being serious, or they're afraid of the person, you know, telling on that person or bringing the concern to the person's parents would, would make that individual mad at them, when, you know, in the big scheme of things, at the end of the day, when that does happen, none of it matters if you save a life. So I really think that we need to get into schools and start teaching kids, particularly high school students, but not necessarily only high school students, what to beware of, or what to, you know, take seriously and, and what to do when the, when any friends of theirs make comments or show signs of potentially hurting themselves. Teach them what the signs are, and then explain to them what to do with that information.
Which, by the way, our, the Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Alliance includes all the school districts, we have counselors and different folks from the different school districts that come to our meetings and that are taking this stuff back to the school districts now, so we are, that's been, we've been doing that for the past year now.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I, when I was in high school, a million years ago, we didn't talk about it at all, so I don't know to the extent that they're talking about it, but it really needs to, because afterwards, if you heard the things that these kids had been told by this, by one particular individual, it was so evident that this person was going to harm him or herself, so, you know, but people are afraid of somebody, I don't want to tell it to my friend, he'll get mad at me, and, and, you know, in the big scheme of things, same thing with drug addiction, who cares if they're mad at you, at least they'll be alive, so I just, I think the stigma needs to end, and we need to talk more about it and make kids more aware of it, and that's really all I have.
And the devastation it does to the, their family and their friends is really horrific, and it is certainly something that we have to continue to do, and Lackawanna County has been doing that, and we will continue to do that, and that, and Fellates is, I'm so old that years ago, I remember, when they actually sold goat there. Rick Nateri tells me, he doesn't remember that, I said, well, I do. Okay. Yes, I've had.
Jerry, it's everything.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.